Check, check. Check one, two. Check one, two. Check, check. Check one, two. Che- Loving you. Check, check, check. Check one, two. Check one, two. Che- check. Check one, two. One, two. One, two.
Checking, wha- wow. Okay. Just do like a check one, two. Like, like. This is totally... I could totally just leave it on here. Hmm. Checking one, two? La 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 la. Think I got it. Yeah, it feels good.
Check one, check two. Check one, check two. Check one, check two. Check one. Check one. One, one, one. Check one. Check one. Check one, two, three. Che- check. Can you hear me, Chris? Check one, two. One, two. It's pretty low. Check one, check two. Yeah, it's a little low. Check one, check two. Okay. Yeah. Oh, I had to drop it. Think it- Check one, check two. Check one, check two. Check one, check two.
We will start the meeting in a minute.
One minute, members of council can take their seats as well as members of the public. We'll begin in just a moment. Merci. Thank you. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. And welcome to the Ottawa City Council meeting of the ninth of October.
We will start with the prayer.
Or prayer and remain standing for the singing of our national anthem. Almighty God, let us work together to serve all our people. It's a real pleasure to ask our colleague councillor Alan Hubley to introduce our special guest who will sing our national anthem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my honour and privilege to introduce Ashley Sernick, who's a Canadian artist who has been writing and performing original songs since she was ten years old. She released her debut album Full Grown in 2011 and has participated in showcases from the International Folk Alliance Conference in Memphis, Tennessee in 2012 to a showcase slot in this past March's Canadian Music Week. In the last two years, Ashley has landed larger stage gigs such as Juno Fest, Blues Fest, Canada Day in Kanata, as well as other festivals within Ontario. For the past three years, Ashley has been involved with the Kanata Haven Youth Centre by writing a song for the Not Alone project. She is also involved in the music video they are currently completing. She was requested to write a song that represented the struggle with the mental health and suicide through youth's eyes. Ashley Sernick has recently performed at the Oktoberfest in Bar Haven and is working on material for new releases. As I say, it's my honour to have Ashley here today to perform the national anthem for the opening ceremony for today's city council. Take it away, Ashley.
Thank you. Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all thy sons command. Car ton bras s'est porté les pèlles, il s'est porté la croix. Ton histoire est une épopée. Tes plus brillantes exploits. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you very, very much for that wonderful rendition of our national anthem. We're pleased today to have with us women who are participating in the civic participation training sponsored by KAWI and the Coalition of Community Health and Resource Centers. They're in their very distinctive salmon-coloured scarves, and we welcome them. Women in this training will be facilitating focus groups in their neighbourhoods so as to identify barriers to people voting in low-income neighbourhoods across the city.
Thank you for accepting our invitation.
With us and watching our city council meeting today. You're more than welcome. I see Professor, I think you're one of the founders of KAWI, and I appreciate your leadership and involvement. So welcome and thank you for being here. At this time, I'd like to invite Laura Bouchard to join me for this meeting's Mayor's City Builder Award, and her councillor, councillor Peter Clark, to come up with us as well. Welcome, Ms. Bouchard. And welcome councillor Clark. Ms. Bouchard is the co-founder of City Crops, a series of year-round local urban gardens in Ottawa. These gardens produce organic, chemical-free food for Ottawaans that is community-used as a donation for those in need.
These gardens produce organic, chemical-free food for Ottawaans that is commonly used as a donation for those in need.
Two groups will benefit greatly from the generosity of City Crops are the Ottawa Food Bank and the Catholic Centre for Immigrants, both of whom rave about the quality of the food donated. City Crops is only two years old, and yet they have grown to an impressive rate to now boast two acres of urban farms within our city. To achieve this, Ms. Bouchard and her colleagues have worked tirelessly all year round, finding indigenous seeds in the winter, growing their seedlings in the spring, planting and maintaining their crops in the summer before harvesting in the fall. You can well imagine how much work that is. And in addition to the business of City Crops, Ms. Bouchard also provides an educative service by teaching others about organic farming and sustainability.
And in addition to the business of City Crops, Mrs. Bouchard also provides an educative service by teaching others about organic farming and sustainability.
In all of her work, Ms. Bouchard keeps looking to the horizon to see where she can grow next year and where she can help others in need. This attitude has made her an inspiration to the many people in Ottawa and a tremendous asset to our city. I want to thank you very much for the work that you have done to make Ottawa a more sustainable and healthy city, and for helping support those organisations who provide badly-needed food to those most vulnerable in our community. Thank you for all you have done, and it's my pleasure on behalf of your city councillor Peter Clark to present you with this award. Well done. Bravo.
Thank you very much, Mayor Watson. When I first started this project, I expected farming to be difficult, but I didn't expect the almost biblical levels of pestilence that we had the summer before last. It was a bit harder than I expected. That's why I'm quite glad that council supports the local food movement in the way they do, in a couple of ways. First, they provide a flexible lease to local farmers at Lansdowne Park. They'll move back in when, next year when Lansdowne project is completed. The other is a new startup programme run by Just Foods, which I think is in Rayner Blois's riding ward, rather. And it provides not just know-how and technical expertise to startup farmers like me, but also land and equipment. So, thank you for supporting the Sustainable Food Movement. I hope you continue that support, and I'm honoured for this award. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. It's now our opportunity to ask the deputy serving clerk to do the roll call, please.
Concierge Manette.
Present.
Councillor Blois.
Present.
Councillor Harder.
Here.
Councillor Wilkinson.
Present.
Councillor O'Schantiri.
Present.
Councillor Cadry.
Present.
Councillor Taylor.
Here.
Councillor Shirelli. Councillor Eglin.
Here.
Councillor Deans.
Here.
Councillor Tierney.
Present.
Concierge Fleury.
Si.
Councillor Clark.
Ici.
Councillor Holmes.
Here.
Councillor Hobbs.
Here.
Councillor Macrae.
Here.
Councillor Chernoshenko.
Present.
Councillor Hume.
Here.
Councillor Blair.
Present.
Councillor Thompson.
Present.
Councillor Moffat.
Here.
Concierge Dorache.
Here.
Councillor Hubley.
Here.
Mayor Watson.
Ici.
You have quorum.
From the meeting of the 11th of September 2013. Adoptee, carried. Declarations of interest, including those originally arising from prior meetings. Councillor Fleury?
I, councillor Monsieur Fleury, declare a potential deemed pecuniary interest on council agenda number sixty-two, item six, application to demolish 207, 209 Murray Street and portion of the former Our Lady's School, 287 Cumberland Street, and to stabilise its south and west walls, as I received a defamation action letter, and I may be involved in litigation if action is taken.
Councillor Hume?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to declare a deemed pecuniary interest on council agenda sixty-two, item six, application to demolish 207, 209 Murray Street and portions of the former Our Lady's School, 287 Cumberland Street, and to stabilise its south and west walls, as I am the subject of a defamation action by the applicant. And the pecuniary interest that would apply, if one was found to exist, would be that, the potential damages and legal fees that I would be required to pay in the event that the action proceeded. Although my lawyer does not believe that I would be found liable, and indeed the action is very possibly frivolous, there is case law suggesting that this may be a sufficient pecuniary interest in all of the circumstances.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Shirelli will be late arriving at council, but indicated his intent to register a declaration of interest regarding item number four on the agenda, PC Report fifty-six A, Official Plan and Zoning, Montreal Road District Secondary Plan. Communications as received. Responses to inquiries as printed. Regrets, absence, no regrets filed to date. Motion to introduce reports.
Councillor Blois and Blair.
Economic Development Committee Report thirty-seven, Planning Committee Report fifty-six A, and Transportation Committee Report thirty-one be received and considered, and that the rules of procedure be suspended to receive and consider Planning Committee Report fifty-seven because of the urgency of the item contained in the report. Waiver of the rules is being requested for Planning Committee Report fifty-seven, item six of the agenda, to allow the applicant to proceed with work requiring to stabilise the south and west walls of Our Lady's School.
Okay, carried. Thank you. Committee reports. Finance and Economic Development Committee Report number thirty-seven, Rapport numéro tanset, Municipal Elections Contribution Rebate Programme Options.
Hold.
Hold. Come back to that. Item number two, Execution of New Municipality Contribution Agreement with OLG, and we have an amendment, so we'll come back to that. Item number three, Ottawa Stadium, three hundred Coventry Road, results of the RF- oh?
Hold.
Hold. Item number four, Official Plan and Zoning, Montreal Road District Secondary Plan. Councillor Hume, I believe, do you have a... Are you going to move an amendment on this?
I am going to move an amendment. It's moved by myself and seconded by councillor Fleury, that we have a technical amendment. As you know, when these items come before council, or council, Mr. Mayor, we often receive submissions from landowners between the time it goes to committee and by the time it comes to council. And we've received a submission from Mr. Weiss on behalf of a landowner, from Weiss and Hunter. We've reviewed that submission, and we found that it has had merit, that it has significant merit. And staff have brought forward an amendment to, I want to say, clarify the impact of the secondary, the Montreal Road District Secondary Plan on the subject property. And I understand the subject property is the Concord Motel, if I'm not wrong on that.
And I believe councillor Fleury will second this motion.
That's right.
And this is his ward.
Yes.
Does anyone have any questions on the technical amendment as presented by Chair Hume? Nope. On the amendment?
Carried.
Carried. On the motion, I'm sorry, councillor Fleury?
I'd like to just say a few things on this. It's a pretty important plan for Vannier, and since amalgamation, there was some issues. Downtown Vannier was between Cummings Bridge and Vannier Parkway, and we didn't fully, you know, a lot of sites could have been torn down and turned into parking lots. There were some issues related to the residential balance.
Okay, on the report, carried. Right. Zoning, 628 Industrial Avenue, zona assiste de Withe Avenue Industrial, carried. Planning Committee Report Number 57, Rapport numéro 50, de comité d'organisme. The procedural memo said that there was going to be a technical amendment, but that, I'm led to believe now, is no longer required. And this is the application where Councillor Hume and Fleury have now left their seats after having declared a potential conflict of interest. So, on item number six, it's application to demolish 207, 209 Murray Street and portions of the former Our Lady's School, 287 Cumberland, and to stabilize its south and west walls.
So, it's an application for demolition, 207, 209 Murray Street, and parts of the old Our Lady's School at 287 Cumberland. It's been a long process, so thank all involved.
Transportation Committee Report Number 31, numéro 30, comité de transport, Oktoberfest celebration, temporary closure motion. And Councillor Fleury, I believe, you have a new motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. It's basically the same motion, but there's a therefore be resolved that change to make sure that, a couple of months ago at CPSC, we recognized all of the great work that the SEED group does, and that's the intent here, is to make sure that the team and all the requirements, condition, and approvals of SEED are met.
Okay, so we have a, is this a replacement motion, councillor?
It's a technical amendment, so I don't know how you see it. It might be...
So, I'm wondering if our clerk or deputy clerk can indicate whether this is a replacement or an amendment to the Oktoberfest issue on Clarence.
Mr. Mayor, it would appear to be a substitution or replacement motion.
Okay. So, this is substituting the report that was at Transportation Committee, moved by Councillor Fleury, seconded by?
Tierney.
Councillor Tierney. On the motion, carried, adopté, merci. Item number eight, recommended changes to the Highway Traffic Act and regulations to include demerit points as a result of a conviction for distracted driving. This was brought to committee by me on behalf of constituent, and Councillor Tierney was good enough to move this at Transportation. On the motion, carried, good initiative. Bulk consent agenda, does anyone wish to remove anything from the bulk consent?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to register dissent on item F, the Ottawa Centre Eco-District.
Okay, so note it. Anyone else wish to remove anything from?
Hold that item for me, please, Mr. Mayor.
Hold that one.
The eco-district, thanks.
That is on page...
Number F.
Number F.
Thanks.
All right, so we'll come back to that. Does anyone else wish to remove anything from the bulk consent agenda? On the bulk consent agenda as presented? Carried. Okay, so we'll head back to item number one, Finance and Economic Development Committee, comité de finance et de développement économique, municipal elections rebate. Councillor Blois had asked that this be held. The floor is yours, councillor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions here, and then, of course, I will be voting against this to be consistent with how I previously voted on this issue. To the clerk's office, and I know you've tried to massage the numbers in a number of ways to try and make it as easily understood and as presentable as possible, but the conclusion I reach from the report is that it really hasn't made any difference in terms of participation in the elections by candidates or in the number of, or the partition by voters themselves. And I'm looking at the highest voter turnout we probably had was at amalgamation for a number of reasons. And can you confirm, first of all, the kind of effect this has had on, the kind of effect this has had on voter turnout?
Mr. Mayor, the issue of voter turnout is one that has many factors, highly contested mayoral or ward races, and it is very difficult without comprehensive surveying to determine what factors increase voter turnout. So, this program, the original intent was, as we understood it, to change the portion of individual versus corporate contributions rather than voter turnout, but we cannot say whether it does or doesn't.
Yeah, and I would agree with you on that. But even in terms of the number of candidates who've participated in elections, there's no real direct correlation between the program and this, between this program and the number of candidates who've run since it was introduced.
Not that we've been able to ascertain.
The, I find one of the interesting figures you've put in here is about the candidates, that generally the proportion of individual contributions has gone up, has gone up overall, and especially has gone up for those who partake in this program. But interestingly enough, even those who did not participate in the program, and this is under, trying to see what page it's on, who chose not to participate have also increased the percentage of their contribution. So, again, there's no real correlation here, is there?
Correct.
Okay. So, I mean, I must admit, I reach a conclusion here that this program really hasn't achieved what it set out to do. But I imagine in your office, or in the clerk's office, and in the staff who run the elections, and by the way, they do a great job of running elections, I'm sure everybody around this table would agree, in one way or another, it does increase the workload considerably for you. And I don't know if that's really reflected in here in terms of what the impact is on staff and what the cost would be on staff. Not talking about the rebate program cost itself, but the administrative cost.
I would suggest that the administrative cost is modest. We are still doing other closeout activities after the election event is, has concluded, so this is just part of our closeout activities.
But it is still an activity, it still costs time and money, and it does have an impact on your operation.
It does.
So, my final conclusion would be that if it hasn't had any of the desirable effects that we set out to do, that it really serves, and oh, by the way, and it's incumbents generally who've had the increase in individual contributions more so, they've taken more advantage of this than anybody else. Is that correct?
Sure.
By a great proportion.
Not necessarily, councillor.
No, but overall.
In the 2006 election, we had the councillor Munter campaign for mayor, where he received far more donations from individuals than any other candidate, any other campaign combined.
Okay, setting that one aside, though, I'm talking about for council position, it's generally, no, not generally, there's a number in here that shows that overall, it's incumbents who've benefited the most from this.
Mr. Mayor, as incumbents would tend to get more donations anyway, we can't say that the program benefits one versus another.
Well, the numbers I saw in here, and because I'm working off a different document now than the one I had on my other, on my other machine, certainly indicated to me that we're the greatest beneficiaries of this. I think I've made my point, Mr. Mayor. I do think this serves incumbents more than challengers. I don't think it's had the desirable effect, and as I previously have done, I will be voting against this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Blois. Let's get these other commentaires, other comments. So, on the report as presented, carried, dissent by Councillor Blois and Councillor Hubley.
And myself.
And Councillor Tierney. Item number two is execution of new municipal contribution agreement, and I'll just ask Mr. Kirkpatrick, because you, as a result of some issues that were raised at Fedco, we tasked you to go back and get three points clarified from the OLG, and I believe that has been done. So, I'll hand it over to you and the city solicitor, who can deal with those issues that came up at committee. Mr. City Manager, please.
Thank you, Mayor. And if I could, I guess, I could ask members of council to refer to the memorandum, a hard copy of which is in front of you on your desk. We did work with representatives of the OLG over the last several days on the response, I guess, last Thursday, following the Fedco meeting, that I put the written request for the answers to these questions to the OLG, and they've been working on it. They were able to provide us with the answer in writing late last evening. So, I apologize for the timeliness of the information coming in forward to council, but we felt it was important that it did get to you this morning. There's a covering memo from the city clerk and solicitor that highlights the answers. And so, if I could focus you on the city clerk's memo, you'll see, with regards to the question of removing the program clause, section five, the OLG has responded back. In fact, this also applies to the liability clause as well, that they are not prepared to change any of the language in the contribution agreement, in the MCA. The MCA is standard for all municipalities across the province. And in fact, as their letter indicates, I think, 22 out of 24 municipalities have signed this letter, the City of Ottawa and City of Toronto being the last two. So, whereas they're not prepared to change any language in the letter, they are, they did put in writing responses to the questions that council, or sorry, the committee asked. So, with regards to the promotion program, they have confirmed that there is no funding requirement on behalf of the city, that in fact, OLG would fund the recognition program. In terms of the liability clause, I'd like to highlight that the actual language, and Mr. O'Connor can speak to this more later if you wish, but the actual language in the proposed MCA regarding liability is very, very similar to the language that is in the existing MCA that council approved in 2012. So, there's no change in that regard. Mr. O'Connor can speak to, from a legal perspective, the issues or lack of issues around that clause being there. In the letter, the OLG has also highlighted that they've confirmed that they have regard for, and in any dealings with future proponents, any potential redevelopment of RCR would be limited to the number of slot machines and the number of gaming tables that was in the August 2012 council motion. They've also gone on to confirm that after selecting an operator, they actually, there would not be the addition of the 21 gaming tables until a proposal for a redevelopment had been developed by a new operator and had been presented to this council or a future council for its consideration. And that, so there isn't the scenario where 21 gaming tables could be added prior to council, having a redevelopment proposal in front of it, that it could consider and then make a decision about whether it wished to move forward with that or not. I think that are, those are the major highlights, Mr. Mayor, and the city clerk's solicitor and myself remain available to answer questions. Or is there anything else, Rick, that you'd like to add? Okay.
Okay, thank you. So, just for clarification, Mr. City Manager, we as a council voted on November 14, 2012, for, in essence, the OLG agreement that deals with the liability issue, and there were three dissenters, Chernychenko, Fleury, and Holmes. So, that passed. The issue with respect to the 21 table games, is our city solicitor convinced that the letter we've received from the OLG that indicates they will respect our cap of 21 plus 1250 is sufficient to ensure that they're not going to come back and do more than that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify. And then, the third point was the community recognition, there's no cost whatsoever to the City of Ottawa taxpayers. Anything that's going to be done is going to be paid for by the OLG.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so that's much clearer. Thank you. Councillor Taylor, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Kirkpatrick, Mr. O'Connor, for the memo. I do wish we had received it sooner. I understand you got it to us as quickly as you possibly could. I want to clarify or ask several questions with regard to the points you just raised. Obviously, if we have casino gaming or gaming in our community, I think we're due some share of revenue for that, so I don't object to a revenue agreement with the OLG, obviously. But I want to make sure that we get the best possible agreement that we can for our residents and constituents. Maybe just taking the issues one at a time. I understand, we'll deal with, I guess, probably the most nebulous one first, the hold harmless clause that's in there. And, Mr. O'Connor, perhaps you can explain to us how, although it is explicitly laid out in that clause, that we could be liable and that they would not be liable for anything, how this will not apply to us and never come back to bite us?
Well, Mr. Mayor, as a lawyer, I would never say the, any clauses in a contract will never come back to bite us, so to speak. But with regards to this particular indemnification clause, it is identical to the one that council approved in November of 2012. It is very similar on a line-by-line basis with some minor modifications to the one that the former City of Gloucester approved prior to amalgamation. With regards to it, what they are looking for is the city's not being required to indemnify the OLG with regards to third-party claims. And right at the bottom of the fifth page of the memo, I note that municipality has no mandate with regards to regulating the operation of gaming facilities. And we've looked at this, we did a review of all of the litigation outstanding involving OLG over the last several years, and we don't see any novel claim based on the operations as such and also this particular type of funding agreement. So, as we point out in the memo, it's highly unlikely that a claim like that would be successful.
So, it's your opinion, then, that if something transpired on their property or with one of their clients or something of that nature, where that individual turned around and cast a lawsuit against the city, that, you know, we're not in a position to be able to then turn around and redirect that lawsuit to the OLG?
In those circumstances, Mr. Mayor, I think we would be able to successfully defend that lawsuit, whether or not we were dealing with OLG.
Okay. Well, let's leave that aside, then, the timer's running. So, to the other two points, I guess, the limitation on gaming. And I understand that, and the mayor just raised, that the OLG, in conversations with Mr. Kirkpatrick, has indicated that they're going to respect council's decision on the limitation on gaming. So, if that's the case, I assume they would have no difficulty encoding that in an agreement. It's a matter of typing one or two sentences into the agreement and emailing it back to us. I don't see that that's exceptionally difficult. I think that would provide council more comfort than an accompanying letter, which does not say that it forms part of the agreement.
Mr. Mayor, the, to answer the councillor's question, through the discussions with the OLG, I think it is, I can report, and frankly, I can understand their perspective, that the agreements must be the same for all municipalities in the province. In fact, I think that was an important principle for this council, is that revenue sharing in the agreements that support them would be the same for all municipalities across the province. What I could endeavor to do is to get a separate agreement. I mean, they've been clear, and I said a few minutes ago, they're not going to change the language in the MCA, but perhaps I could get a separate agreement that would speak to the MCA, be supportive or supplementary to it, that would codify the number of gaming tables and slot machines in accordance with council's motion.
If we receive, if you ask for that, and we receive some kind of accompanying document, Mr. O'Connor, is it acceptable, if that document is worded appropriately, that it could be taken in conjunction with the MCA? Or, you know, for maximum comfort, must that recognition of council's decision be embedded within the MCA? I'm asking as a lawyer, which is more enforceable if we're in court?
The more enforceable one, Mr. Mayor, would be an appendix or an amendment of the current MCA, which the OLG has said no to. As a second alternative or a second best, we would certainly seek to get the right wording in a complimentary agreement to that effect.
Okay. Okay, turning now to the community recognition program. I know that the conversation, as it evolved, both at the Fedco table and then, as a result of your conversations, Mr. Kirkpatrick, you say that the OLG has said that they will bear the cost of the community recognition program, that it won't be on Ottawa taxpayers. But a copy of the letter that they give us simply says, "The OLG plans to financially support this initiative in each host municipality." It doesn't say exclusively, it doesn't say that the, there's no expectation that the municipality contribute, which is what the MCA... it evolved, both at the Fedco table and then as a result of your conversations, Mr. Kirkpatrick, you say that the OLG has said that they will bear the cost of the community recognition program, that it won't be on Ottawa taxpayers. But a copy of the letter that they give us simply says, "The OLG plans to financially support this initiative in each host municipality." It doesn't say exclusively, it doesn't say that the, there's no expectation that the municipality contribute, which is what the MCA leads us to believe. So I'm not sure that, that what we've received from them is clear, and I'm not prepared to trust them. So I don't know if that's a question for you, but I guess if I phrase it as a question, do you have from them any indication that they're willing to put into crystal-clear writing that the municipality is not on the hook for financially supporting the community recognition program piece? Because what they've said here is they'll, they'll cost share. They haven't said you don't have to pay anything.
So, Mr. Mayor, the, the discussion that I've had that would be behind this is that it is at the city's discretion, whether it wishes to participate financially in any community recognition program. I take your point about the wording that's in the letter, but through the discussions, I can tell you that there's no implied or commitment that the city would cost share, the, the costs of any community recognition program. As the letter indicates, OLG's position is that they would work cooperatively with host municipalities to develop an initiative that highlights the community use of hosting fees in a manner that reflects the preferences of this city. In other words, how the city has chosen to use those, the revenues that are shared with it, and that they would financially support the initiative. Again, if you'd like belt and suspenders on that, I could attempt to get that.
Well, I, I just, on a point, Counselor Taylor, I'd be happy to second a motion, if you want to move a motion that the city not invest any financial resources into these kinds of recognition programs. I'm happy to second that, so that we give our own staff the direction, they're not to incur any expenses, and that de facto makes it an OLG expense and not ours. So if you're willing to move that, I'll be happy to second that, so it's crystal clear we won't put financial resources into any recognition program.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. I don't think it, it deals with the sum of the issues, it deals with this particular issue, so maybe another colleague would be willing to move that.
Because I, I thought you were concerned about that, and you're not willing to move a motion to that effect.
I absolutely am concerned about it, and I'm happy to move that motion, but unless the other issues are addressed as well.
Yeah. But let's deal with that one, and I think if you want to write it out, I'd be happy to second it.
All right. The last point I want to make, Mr. Kirkpatrick, was with regard to the infrastructure development costs. And we had some discussion around the Fedco table about, about the costs of development. I believe it was Counselor Deans who had raised at one point the costs of infrastructure associated with a new facility. And that was during the casino debate, and I understand that we're on the contribution agreement now, not, not a debate about the site itself. However, the language in here indicates that, you know, any, any costs that are normal or for development would be, not affect our contribution agreement. But if we went the step of saying, you know, you must pay added costs, it says, as long as they're not directly to the OLG, they won't affect the contribution agreement. But perhaps you can give me how that would work if the proponent in the OLG simply choose to handle that a little differently to try to get out of paying any extra costs.
Mr. Mayor, I think the, the OLG's been clear that the costs related to development or a master development agreement would be between the city and the, the developer or the operator of the gaming facility. And this letter also indicates that they understand the conditions that we're in, for instance, section three of the, of council's August 2013 motion, and that they would put those in the RFP, and that they would be supportive of the position council's taken on those costs, and that those costs would be borne by the developer, negotiated between the city and developer as part of a development application. The exception that they've identified in this report is that beyond that, if the city was to attempt to levy unreasonable costs against the OLG directly, then they might consider that in the construct of the revenue sharing agreement.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Kirkpatrick. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Engle, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I guess, first question, Mr. O'Connor, building on the, the motion that may or may not be brought on by the mayor and Counselor Taylor. A motion that says, "We will not contribute to the cost," would not be binding on the OLG, correct?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
So if they insisted on a strict interpretation of the existing wording in the agreement that says we're to pay, then we could have as many motions as we want, it would be of no effect on the OLG, correct?
Mr. Mayor, I'm just going to look at the agreement. I don't understand the, where the specific wording arises.
Don't take it personally, Counselor Engle, that everyone's leaving when you start it.[916.50][916.50](Laughter) I'm sure they don't mean any harm.
Not offend it in any way.
Mr. Mayor, with respect, perhaps the member could point out the, the exact section in section five that he's referring to?
I, I don't have the agreement right in front of me. My understanding of the agreement from the Fedco meeting that we had, and the presentation was given their councillor, different type of councillor, was that the agreement spoke to the city contributing to the cost of the, any recognition advance. And if I'm correct from what Mr. Kirkpatrick said, is they're not prepared to change the wording of the existing agreement. I think both myself and Counselor Taylor are relying on the presentation we had at Fedco in terms of the wording of the, of the proposed agreement.
Mr. Mayor, with regards to that, I, I have the, the report from Fedco in front of me, and this is, I, I believe what I referenced in answering the questions at that point in time. We referenced section five C, however, specifically requires the city to cooperate reasonably with the OLG to facilitate messaging and communication of the program and its mandate, and furthermore, obliges the city to comply with all reasonable initiatives and requests proposed by the OLG regarding branding, marketing, and public acknowledgements in respect of funding provided by the OLG. The paragraph goes on to say, "No cost allocation or responsibilities are specified in the proposed MCA for the program. It is anticipated that the city would have to pay for its own costs for one or more promotional events to be held as part of the program. And it is further anticipated that discussions will occur between the city manager and the OLG staff to discuss the scope of the program, et cetera." And it was at that point, Mr. Mayor, that the treasurer identified that those discussions had taken place and that we were not bound to pay any costs.
Right. So we have one document being a proposed signed contract, saying it is anticipated that we would contribute to the cost. And the best we can get back from OLG is a letter saying, "We will," we being them, "will support and not fully pay for it." So I still have my concerns in that regard, and I'm not sure that the proposed motion of the mayor is going to address that, because it will not bind the OLG. In, in terms, following up again on, on comments made by Counselor Taylor, when he asked you, Mr. O'Connor, which would be more effective, either a, a letter that was an addendum to the MCA or a separate agreement? Your answer was that if it was embedded into the existing proposed agreement, that would be of more force and effect. Second would be a separate agreement. So I want to ask you, so what, a letter from the OLG is dead last? Because that's all they're giving us, about, about the number of tables and the number of, of, of machines?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that would be my opinion.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Counselor Wilkinson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just was reading this agreement, Mr. O'Connor, it says, under community recognition program five A, it says, "During the term, the parties will collaborate in good faith to design and jointly implement this APR." Is "will" not a requirement? It's not quite the same as "shall," but...
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. The use of the word "shall" in legal contracts is mandatory. The use of the word "will" is somewhat less than that. And again, when I read through clause five A and B, I don't see the express language that says, "Host municipalities will pay anything under this program."
Well, your "designing jointly implementing," the chances of it having money are quite great. And basically, what I want to say, this, this letter that we got back sort of confirms that OLG has accepted the one location only for any casino operation. Because we did not do that selection on an open and competitive basis, I can't support anything further going on on casinos. I'd rather not have no casino than not have, than have an unfair practice. So I'll be voting against this and any other motion that should come forward on casinos, because I really think, under the situation we have now, we shouldn't have any. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And a couple of questions, Mr. O'Connor, on this going forward. In terms of the request from the OLG and through their agreement with the private operator or private sector selected, shouldn't he or she be promoting their own business rather than asking the city or the municipality to do that for them?
Mr. Counselor, through the mayor, the, I think the, the framework here, and again, it's, I'm just providing for context to counsel the OLG's perspective on this, they share revenues with host municipalities. Host municipalities determine what their priorities are for those revenues. It's part of their construct province-wide that municipalities will participate in a program that, that tells the community about what benefits are being achieved with the revenues that the OLG is sharing with the host municipality. That's their construct. It's, it goes in hand-in-hand with the construct where they're sharing revenues with the host municipality.
Thank you for that, Mr. Kirkpatrick. But in terms of the promotional piece of this, in terms of the agreement, what I'd read it as is that they're saying that the municipality must promote the benefit of that casino, whether it be cost-sharing revenue, or whether it be other promotional items that the casino needs from time to time going forward. Am I reading that wrong?
My understanding is that what they're requesting the municipality to help recognize and promote is the benefits that are achieved with the revenues that are shared with the host municipality. But, and I, I think your earlier question, Counselor, was more in the form of what's, is it our opinion that that is reasonable or not? And frankly, as you're well aware, I think it's, what's important is council's opinion about whether that is reasonable or not. But it, I can just confirm, that's part of the, the OLG framework province-wide, and it's expected from all municipalities that are receiving revenue as a host municipality.
Thank you. My second question, in terms of the conditions that the municipality may put in on this agreement going forward, how binding are they to the operator or to the party that's selected to operate that casino? I mean, I understand the MCA being uniform across the province, so how can we as a municipality put in conditions in those? And how could they be binding for us unless we make it ironclad, in terms of either the mayor's motion going forward and/or something similar to that?
I believe in response to the question earlier, the city solicitor has indicated that a motion of council is not binding on the OLG. And so it's what is in the agreement that's being executed between the OLG and the city that would, would be binding on them.
In terms of the agreement, if this agreement does not, or if the council today does not approve this, what happens to that agreement in terms of going forward?
That is covered, and I, I apologize, I failed to highlight that at the outset. That is actually a question that Fedco asked. It's, it's answered in the letter from the OLG. It's the last section on page two, where OLG says, "If the city of Ottawa chooses not to sign this MCA, then the MCA that was approved by the city in December of 2012 will remain in effect." So the existing agreement won't be replaced by the new one. And I think the city's treasurer could indicate the impact on that would be one of revenue. Is it about a million dollars a year less in revenue, Marion?
No. The government's, I think, well, changed it to that, you know, except for...
I see. Okay. So there wouldn't be the potential to pick up the revenue on the gaming tables if they were introduced? So we would revert back, we'd, we'd remain with the existing agreement that we have?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So just to clarify that, because I was told something earlier that it was a loss of about one to 1.3 million, because the previous formula is a different formula than what is being proposed now. Is that not correct?
Mr. Mayor, you, in December of 2012, you signed a new agreement with, which amended the formula and brought it to what it is in this agreement, with the exception that it did not have gaming tables. That's from a revenue perspective, that's the only change in this new agreement. So if you didn't sign this, the old agreement would be enforced. So if there were gaming tables put in, there's no mechanism for us to share in that revenue. So there is no loss right now from us from a, not signing this agreement.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Holmes?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I have a motion that I'd like to put up on the screen. Mr. Mayor, the province needs us far more than we need them. They need cities across this province to agree to put in more gambling situations for them to make money. Many cities have said no, we're one of the few that have said yes. So I don't understand why we seem to think that they are controlling us and we will have to do whatever they say, and we not being strong in our recommendations back to them. My motion talks about the liability clause being eliminated from the agreement. I think it's ridiculous that we would agree that we will be liable for any problems that occur, and they absolve themselves from all liability. And I'm asking that the board of health recommendations be included in the agreement. Nowhere in this agreement is there a comment about the health problems that will accrue from more gambling to be happening in this municipality. And we know well that we are totally underfunded for the health problems that we already have. We get 741,000 that goes to Rita Wood and community health centers, and it's inappropriate. It's not nearly meeting the needs. And we're asking for 2 million to come from the Ministry of Health to the Lynn, so that that can be distributed to community groups and agencies that work in this field. And there's nothing about that in this agreement. So in fact, the province doesn't care about the gambling problems. They're washing their hands of them, and that I don't think is acceptable from our residents' point of view and the problems that we have here. So I'm asking that the board of health recommendations be included in the agreement, and that the liability clause be eliminated. It's clear that we need better funding for our health problems, that we need to acknowledge our health problems, and move in a progressive and effective way to get better contributions from the province. You know, we, we're also asking the city for more contributions, but that is not, this is not the time to talk about the city's contribution. This is a time to try and get better contributions from the provincial government. So if we are going to go for more gambling opportunity, then we certainly need to have more funding for those people who are problem, problem gamblers, and we know the numbers will increase with the opportunity increasing. So, Mr. Mayor, I ask that, that we vote for the recommendation that we have seconded by Counselor Deans.
Okay. So we'll deal with all the motions at the end. Thank you. Counselor Monette?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess, the question that I would have is, we've talked about section five earlier on, and apparently that cannot be amended. So from my understanding, then, there's nothing in the contract that we can touch or change. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Now, I'd like to, I, I know the city manager touched on it, but could you clarify very clearly, if we vote no today, what are the pros and cons of doing such a decision? Is there anything positive about voting no today, first?
I can only speak from a revenue perspective, and there's no difference for me whether you vote no or yes on this. The existing agreement gives you the increased revenue from the slot machines. There are no gaming tables, so you're not losing any revenue from that. So I can just give you the finance perspective, and it, to me, it's neutral.
Okay. And the city manager, will you be able to answer the same question?
To extend from that, the issue, I guess, would be one in the future. Should a, this council or future council vote in support of a redevelopment at RCR that would add the gaming tables, the revenue sharing agreement that would be in place at that time, it could be changed at that time, but the one that would be in place at that time would not provide for revenue sharing on the revenues from the gaming tables.
Are we doing questions and comments, or we are? Okay, thank you. Okay, so I, I'll just wrap up with my comments, and I will not support Counselor Holmes's motion. That's all I need to say on that one. Well, OLG, as far as I'm concerned, has guaranteed that they will respect council's wishes when it comes to slots and tables. I think that's a positive step for the city. That's something that a lot of people around the table... That's something that a lot of people around the table had issues with, and I think it's been very clear that they will respect that. The city has been accepting money without any issues in the past from Rita Carlton and from the province, I should say, and there's not been any issues accepting the money. I think as we look, move forward, we have to look that if we vote no today, that we are probably taking a step back. The province has clearly stated that the only way that they will accept a motion is if we accept all the amendments. As you know, I had issues with the item, section five, and that I had clearly stated, and actually tried to vote against it at the Fedco meeting. But basically, if it comes down to voting against section five, which means I have to vote against this proposal, I'm not prepared to do that. I think that we have to move forward, and I think we have to start being proactive. Let's do what we had set out to do in the first place. It was always about going through in the RFP, getting a new operator and a new casino or refurbished casino. And I think it's time that we move forward, it's time that we make a decision, and it's, I think, voting no, I think, is a step in the wrong direction. So I will be supporting the motion the way it is, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, councillor Monnet. And councillor Monnet and Blowas have a technical amendment, because I inadvertently allowed a separate vote on section five, so we can get that at motion. So I appreciate that. Councillor Deans?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, Mr. Mayor, my problem with this contribution agreement is it's clearly one-sided, it's clearly very slanted to protect the interests of OLG, but it does not protect the interests of the city of Ottawa or our citizens and our taxpayers. And in my estimation, it would be irresponsible of us to sign on to this agreement in its current state. Mr. O'Connor, you received a very interesting letter from a fellow whose name is Rob Simpson, who wrote about the risk. I don't know if you recall the letter, but I think it's a very important letter that we understand the risk that the city of Ottawa is taking on if we sign this municipal contribution agreement. And he points out that the Board of Health has given some explicit suggestions that would go toward harm reduction for problem gamblers. And for us, to sign this municipal contribution agreement but not adopt the Board of Health recommendations would actually probably lead to a court case where the city could be found liable, because we were told by our Board of Health that there were harm reduction strategies, and yet we have not incorporated them into the municipal contribution agreement. So, Mr. O'Connor, I just would like to ask you if you read that letter and if you would agree with the premise of it, that in fact, to not do what councillor Holmes in my motion suggests, which is to add the recommendations from the Board of Health in here, would be putting the city at considerable risk?
With respect, Mr. Mayor, no, I do not agree with Mr. Simpson's assessment on that. I have had my lawyers and external lawyers look at this particular clause in depthly, and I do not agree with his assessment. With regards to the Board of Health recommendations, this council did accept what was sent from the Board of Health, Health, I think, seven except for one clause, so this council has already addressed that issue, I think, very clearly. With regards to the proposal, Mr. Mayor, to remove the liability clause, I said before at committee that this was a single contract, it was a package deal, and that is not severable in that respect, and the OLG has told us that on numerous occasions. The more practical answer, Mr. Mayor, is if, in effect, this motion, the earlier motion, sorry, with regards to removing the liability clause, was successful at council, as you have heard, you will be then left with the November 2012 agreement, which has the exact same clause. So I think on a practical basis, if it's successful here, you are still in the same situation if you believe liability is an issue, and I've said I don't, I think it's a very, very modest risk here, that you will not be any further ahead.
Well, I suppose that, I mean, for me, it doesn't mean that we shouldn't try and change it now as we move forward. I don't think this is a one-size-fits-all province. I don't think the city of Ottawa is the same as the city of Kingston, or the city of Toronto, or the city of London, or anywhere else. I think we're all different, and I think that we should have the right to enter into a municipal contribution agreement that meets our requirements and concerns moving forward. And unfortunately, I don't think that this municipal contribution agreement does that. Did the old agreement also have us being cheerleaders for the OLG, as this one does?
No, Mr. Mayor. The section with regards to the community recognition program is the new section.
And, you know, to me, it just goes against the grain to be promoting gambling, which in effect, I think, is what that clause ultimately does. And I don't think that it's responsible for us to sign on to that. So for this reason, I'll certainly be supporting the motion from councillor Holmes, that I've lent my name a second or two, and presuming that this goes to a main vote, I won't be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Clark, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, much as I would like to just support these amendments, the fact is that this is a one-size-fits-all agreement. This is the province's position, that they, not, it's a, it's a document that they have offered to everybody who's doing hosting, and that is the provincial hosting agreement. The Board of Health recommendations, we did as a council support them already, but to get them included in that agreement is probably not on because of the intransigent position of OLG. While accordingly, then, if OLG is not willing to entertain any kind of modification, both on the liability side and the community recognition side, and every other side you want to look at this from, then this particular agreement should be rejected. And so that I am going to vote against this agreement, because no amendments are possible, and I'm not sure we need the end result that's being predicted. So I am just going to vote against the entire package.
Great. Thank you, councillor. Councillor Elshantiari, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And to Mr. O'Connor or Mr. Kirkpatrick, I know my colleague talked about this is the province one-size-fits-all. Have we checked if this is the standard it's been given to all other municipality, or this is something unique for Ottawa?
We have not checked that, but the OLG has said that it is the exact same agreement that is presented to all 24 municipalities, and as I said earlier, 22 have signed them, Ottawa and Toronto being those that have not at this point in time. Have I pulled all 24 of those agreements and compared them? No.
Okay. Mr. O'Connor, last year, I believe, we voted for this type of agreement, I think, without the three councillors who dissent on it, Cherenchenko, Flory, and Holmes. So what does it mean today, a vote nay or aye on this agreement?
Mr. Mayor, if you vote yes to the agreement, then as the treasurer's indicated, if there are new gaming tables, there might be some funding at some point in the future. If you don't, the OLG has been clear that they will stand with the agreement that the city agreed to last year, and it will be in place, in my opinion, until notice is given by the OLG to terminate it or to move forward in some fashion. So you have last year's agreement.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Deputy clerk, there seemed to be some confusion from councillor Deans. Can you remind us who dissented on that last motion in November 2012 on the original agreement? Sorry, the deputy clerk is the floor. Sorry, councillor. Sorry, those dissenters were?
The dissenters on the staff report were councillors Cherenchenko, Flory, and Holmes. It's November 14th, 2012 meeting minutes.
Okay, thank you. Councillor McCrae, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I wonder if our treasurer, or our city solicitor, or our city manager, all of who are geniuses in their own right, could tell us succinctly what the delta is monetarily between the 2012 agreement and the 2013 agreement? So what pecuniary interest does the city give up if we don't sign this agreement versus the other one? Succinctly and clearly?
None today. And in the future, if the OLG was not prepared to enter into a different revenue-sharing agreement, should council approve the addition of the 21 tables, 4% of the revenue that would come from those 21 tables, that's a future loss, not a current one.
Through the mayor, Mr. Kirkpatrick, you're saying none today, so, and it's very, very clear that we default back to the 2012. I'm not unfamiliar with that point. But you're talking about if the OLG will not accept what from the city in the future? Sounds murky to me. Sounds a bit gray. Sounds like blackmail to sign this letter. Not from your end?
No. Then, in, I'll try to make it black and white. In the future, if council was to vote to, as part of redevelopment, to add the 21 tables to RCR?
But we've done that already, Mr. Kirkpatrick.
You've indicated that a redevelopment could have up to 21 gaming tables added to it, but the motion also spoke to conditions and an economic analysis being done after a proponent comes forward. So you've not provided your final approval to that yet.
But through the mayor, and just to clarify on that, though, I think that this council has signaled its intention to the OLG. So if you were to send a letter to them in the future, we want 21 gaming tables or a council of the day whenever this happens, that should not come as a surprise to the OLG.
Through you, Mayor, I agree, you've clearly signaled the support of 21 gaming tables, but after you've had the opportunity to see a redevelopment proposal, so that's when the revenue loss would occur, if the OLG at that time was not prepared to offer again this revenue-sharing agreement to the city to enter into.
So we either sign this today, or we run the risk in the future of losing 4%, is what I just heard you say.
From a monetary perspective, that's the difference, yes.
And I guess, Mr. Mayor, I know the city solicitor doesn't like to speak conclusively about what could happen, and maybe, Mr. Kirkpatrick, you want to mention that, but I would find it highly unlikely that we could be one of 24 municipalities that the OLG would say, you wouldn't do what we told you to do in October, so we're not going to respect the authority, the autonomy, the democracy of the city of Ottawa. I find that hard to believe.
Is that a question, councillor?
It's kind of a sneaky question, through you, Mr. Mayor, if you will, because I guess, Mr. Kirkpatrick, I'd find it frustrating to receive a letter like this, never mind that it's last minute, things happen, and that's fine, but the city has spoken, we've asked for clarification about an issue, and now we're being told if you don't do the cookie cutter boilerplate, there's a possibility that this council could enter, or not enter into an agreement, but that we could stagnate a process, that future councils could be deprived of a significant amount of revenue because of the potential obstinate behavior of the OLG.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I could take the last comment from the councillor as a question, I would say that I think if the only issue between 21 gaming tables being added to RCR and them not being added was the OLG agreeing to reoffer a revenue-sharing agreement that had revenue-sharing on gaming tables, I think it would be unlikely that the OLG would not agree at that point in time.
So this council could proceed to stick with the status quo, wait and see what happens, and then take our chances, if you will, which is kind of ironic, considering we're talking about betting. Mr. Mayor, the other question I have for the city manager is that one of our colleagues around the table alluded to the fact that somehow by accepting this agreement, and I don't mean to put words in anyone's mouth, so if I say this the wrong way, it's not intended, but that by accepting this agreement, we're somehow tacitly, I guess, conveying that our interest to the community, that the next expansion would be at RCR. Would you share that opinion? That the OLG has now said, yes, that's where you're going to have your gaming facility? We may have indicated that's what our preferences, but I don't think the OLG has said they agree to that. Is that accurate?
No, Mayor, I think the OLG has been clear that they accept the decision that council made in August in that regard.
They will accept it, but they have not come back and made a final decision.
Until they run the RFP and test the marketplace, I don't think there's a decision they can make, but they have accepted council's direction in that motion.
Right, so through the mayor, but I think there's a big difference in saying they've accepted our direction, they've made a final decision. Because I don't want to link this letter to any of the issues that were raised during the previous debate.
I apologize, councillor, and through the mayor. They've accepted, when I say they've accepted the decision of council last August, what they've accepted is what they will issue in the RFP.
Correct.
Is that that is the cited gaming facility.
RCR. And through the mayor, my final question about this is that, given that you've just confirmed that they've acknowledged, accepted, whatever the language is, this council's preference, the 2012 agreement would not alter in any way the OLG's consideration of council's preference, correct? Because it would continue to rule.
I believe that's correct.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, anyone else like to speak on this issue? Just a couple of quick observations. One, there were three basic issues that were raised at Fedco that had some members of committee concerned. One was with respect to whether the OLG would respect our limit of 21 table games and 1250 machines. We've been told at least five times, I count it by Mr. Kirkpatrick, they will accept that. And I have absolutely no reason to think otherwise, that they have given us, they've told me personally, they've put it in writing, and I think, you know, we can argue and take wax at the OLG all day, but the fact of the matter is, they are not going to go back on what this council has said, because that's in their mandate. They've indicated that the council has the say on the location, and we've set the parameters in terms of the number of tables and slots. The second point is with respect to the community recognition. We've all been to events with other levels of government, where we've been there with novelty checks, and we've been up on stage, and we've praised the other level of government as a partner. This is nothing more or nothing less, simply asking us to participate in a recognition program, no cost to us, full cost to the OLG. You know, it's similar to what we've done, for instance, when the OLG launched the snowbus during Winterlude. I and other members of council were there for that announcement, because it was a significant contribution to Winterlude that would transport people from the downtown across to Jacques Cartier Park and so on. And I don't see any problem with any other level of government asking for some recognition of where the money that has been raised is going. We like that ourselves, as members of council. We appreciate the fact that various festivals recognize us with our logo and thank us for their support. With respect to the liability issue, I think we've heard from the city treasurer in response to councillor Deans' question, very clearly, this is, in essence, the same agreement that all of us minus three members of council voted for in November 2012, pretty standard template agreement. And the final point is the impact. Some members asked the obvious question, what are the consequences of us not supporting this agreement? Well, in the immediate term, there's really no consequence, because we have the existing November 2012 agreement in place for revenue sharing. But the majority of this council voted to add table games, and so it would seem a little bizarre, to put it mildly, that we spent a lot of time and a lot of heavy lifting to get those table games, to now tell the OLG, don't bother giving us extra funds for those table games. And so as we proceed down the years, every revenue stream is important to us. So it would send a rather mixed signal, I think, when you think about this for a moment, that we ask for table games, but we receive zero benefit, because we're upset with one or two of the clauses, which every other municipality, with the exception of Toronto, has signed. So I ask you to think about that, and we have two motions. The first is councillor, I don't, councillor Taylor, are you moving that direction? Okay, so I apologize, we have three. So there's councillor Taylor second it by myself, and it is, I'll read it out, or I believe it's on your screen, therefore be a resolve that no- believe it's on your screen, "Therefore, be resolved that no city dollars be used to support the community recognition program required under section five of the municipal contribution agreement." Carried? The next is councillor Blowus and Monnet. It's a technical requirement, and I apologize, I take responsibility, I allowed councillor Monnet to separate section five, which was not permitted under the rules, so on his technical amendment. Carried? The next one, councillor Holmes and councillor Deans, that the liability clause be eliminated for the agreement, municipality, municipality contribution agreement, and that the board of health recommendation be included in this agreement. I'll ask the City Solicitor and clerk, is this motion in order?
Mr. Mayor, I, I do not believe it's in order for the purposes, because, for the purposes of this debate. With regards to the first part, again, and you've explained your ruling previously, the deputy and I both felt that the, the additional document that you looked at, the contract, was not a severable document under all the circumstances, so I would suggest that the first clause is out of order. With regard to the second one, it, it's a little bit more complicated. I know that this council on August 28th approved a number of recommendations arising from the Health Board, and when I look at them, I see there are recommendations with regards to the board, the city, the successful proponent at the end of the day, and the OLG. So there's a number of jurisdictional issues that arise, and I fear, Mr. Mayor, that without greater clarity, i.e. going line by line through them and trying to sort them all out, and please, I'm not suggesting that, that at the end of the day, it would be arguable that it's void for vagueness. In addition, if you can't, as the OLG has been very clear with us, subtract clauses from their agreement, I would suggest that you are not going to be able to add them, and then I would go back to the non-severability issue. So for those reasons, Mr. Mayor.
So with that rationale, I'll rule that motion out of order. So on the main agreement as amended, yeas and nays have been called.
Councillor Holmes?
No.
Councillor Hobbs?
Yes.
Councillor Cadri?
No.
Councillor Tierney?
Yes.
Concierge Monnet?
We-
Councillor McCray?
No.
Councillor Thompson?
Yes.
Councillor Chernoshenko?
No.
Councillor Egley?
No.
Councillor Hume?
Yes.
Concierge Flurry?
No.
Councillor Harder?
No.
Councillor Moffett?
Yes.
Councillor Hubley?
Yes.
Councillor Blowus?
Yes.
Councillor Deans?
No.
Concierge Dorash?
Yes.
Councillor Clark?
No.
Councillor Taylor?
No.
Councillor Wilkinson?
No.
Councillor Alshantiiri?
Yes.
Councillor Shirelli? Councillor Blay?
Yes.
Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Twelve yeas, eleven nays.
The next item on the agenda is the Ottawa Stadium 300 Coventry Road, results of the request for offers. I'd like to point out in the audience, we have Miles Wolfe, who is the Commissioner of the Can-Am League, who has traveled from Raleigh-Durham, North Carolina. Welcome, Mr. Wolfe, and thank you for making the trip here today. So councillor Blowus, you have questions and comments, please. Sorry, just before, Mr. Kirkpatrick, is there anything else new that council needs to be notified about on this agreement since committee?
No, Mayor, there is no new, no news.
Councillor Blowus, the floor is yours for questions and comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I don't want to rehash the whole chronology of how we got here, because obviously there's a number of leases in the past, there's a litany of legal actions that have taken place, we've gone through RFOs, RFQs, RFPs, but I do have some questions in terms of how we arrived at this point, and how we're getting sort of the best value for the city and for the taxpayer. And I want to start off with, I do want to go back to around 2009, when council asked for a, a long-term development strategy for this site, for 300 Coventry Road. And there were a number of, there was a range of options were put on the table, including maintaining the existing stadium as it is, modifying the stadium for an adaptive reuse, or eliminating the stadium as an element of the, as an element for future development with the economic benefits. And what's never been clear as a result of that, as we've gone through a couple more reports, is what exactly the economic opportunities would have been at this site? And can somebody refresh my memory here in terms of the work that our real estate people would have done to, to break this down, to tell us why the, the best economic use isn't something different? And I don't know if there was ever a formal report actually submitted to council on that.
Mayor, I don't believe there was. The, and I don't have that information in front of me today, and in fact, I can't really recall much from my mind, and even if I could, it would be about two years old. And so I guess the, the direct answer to your question is, I couldn't tell you today what the, the economic benefits of those alternatives would be. Staff have not pursued that avenue in close to two years, since council was clear that they wished to see a process take place that would attempt to put baseball back into that purpose-built facility.
But I would think, though, in terms of, I'm looking at the report or the, the council motion and direction from December 2009, and those three, those three options were clearly spelled out, and I, I would think that by being here today, or by having gone through a number of steps, that two of those three were eliminated on some basis, on some grounds.
Correct, and as, I'll reiterate again from my previous answer, on the grounds that council directed us to undertake a process to put baseball back in that purpose-built facility.
Okay. With respect to the proposal, that's before us now, and, and I guess it's being couched in terms of, it's better than spending $40 million for a, for the proposal that would have involved a double-A franchise, and I guess that makes around $5 million look a lot more palatable. In terms of that $5 million, when I look at all the needs that we have out there, especially in terms of recreation, I think we're dedicating a fair amount of resources to culture now, but on the recreation side, there's a, there's certainly a lack out there, and even our parks development and everything else, and how that money could be well-applied, is, is this in effect taking away resources from other community uses?
Mayor, perhaps before I answer the priority question, if I can understand it that way, councillor Blowus, I'd just like to have Mr. Radke confirm what the, I think when you were talking with the $5 million, that was roughly what council had approved as a capital investment in the stadium. We should reconfirm what the, the numbers are in terms of this proposal, they're less, and then I'll answer the priority piece of the question.
Well, yeah, they're less, I think the net is less, but there, there are still, when I'm looking at the numbers here, they're, they're, well, you can, you can clarify them, and then-
Mr. Mayor, the, in, since we received the initial approval for the, the $5.7 million that was initially identified, in 2012, we spent approximately $700,000 on life cycle activities. In 2013, we're spending approximately $900,000, and these are basic life cycle. And then for 2014, we're anticipating $500,000, that's for basic life cycle, and then in addition to that, we've identified in the report before you today, $250,000 that would go towards upgrading the lighting facility at the stadium.
And I know you referenced, for instance, the $750,000 that was spent already, the additional life cycle this year and next year, but I'm looking at this, the source of this funds, for instance, I'm looking at parks that can't be fully developed. I've got parks right now where we're telling community groups to go out and do their own fundraising on brand-new parks, these are, because development charges aren't sufficient. So we've got sports groups that are talking about, they want to convert fields, upgrade fields, they're being told to go out and do major capital partnerships. Some of them are going to the bank to sign, sign their life away, because they can't get the money from the city, yet we're, we're willing to cough this money up for a facility that under our own, you know, what it, what it's telling us is, even as a vacant facility, it is costing us money. The site is being basically tied up for 10 years here, and without any option to move forward, I know it's two, five-year, two, five-year leases, without an option to move forward and do something else. At least when we looked at lands down, we looked at, how do we leverage what we have with other uses, and how do we get other revenue streams? We're, we're really weak on that in this report, that's not showing up.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, and of course councillor, I mean, the point you're raising, which is, how much is this going to cost, and what benefit are we getting for it, and how does that compare to what other priorities council could choose to invest the funding in? So the number that I would, I would suggest that you focus on, as I said at the committee, is $650,000, because if you look at what is being recommended in terms of the city being responsible for the management and operations of this facility, to bring in public and city programming into it, to include the, the tenancy of the Can-Am franchise, we think that the, the, the net, the gross operating budget that'll be required to support all that is $750,000 a year. Then the report identifies the $300,000 a year of life cycle spending. And then if you net, what do we net away from that? Well, what we would net away from the, the lease is about $450,000 a year, in terms of the Can-Am contribution to the, so minimum rent, additional rent of $100,000, additional rent of $250,000, and then a contribution to life cycle of about $100,000. So the way I would recommend that you consider it is, for $650,000 a year, including the life cycling of that facility, which probably, something like $200,000 to $300,000 of that, we'd be looked at, looking at anyway, even if we were mothballing that facility. But to be most conservative, $650,000 a year. The benefit is 50 Can-Am baseball games a year, and at, at a minimum, something between 60 and 75 days of city public, city programming in that facility, so community public use. The report then goes to talk about, though, we are, we're going to go look to see if we can better that public sector value equation, by taking a look at what other tendencies can we put into that facility, by looking at how we could expand the 60 to 75 days of, of, of community use to more with the investment in, in a, in a, an artificial field, and is there a business case for that? But at a minimum, $650,000 a year for the benefit that I've described. And it's up to council to consider whether that priority is a better investment of dollars than in some of the other parks and recreation programming opportunities that you've mentioned.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned the artificial turf, because over and above the costs that you just cited, there's reference in there to the lights need to be replaced, I don't believe that's included in the life cycle costs yet, that's an, that's an over and above cost, consideration of an artificial turf. If we want to treat everybody equal and things equal, we're telling other groups, if they want artificial turf, go out and find a way to pay for it. We're telling groups that if they want lights, I mean, even if they want lights in a parking lot, that they have to pay for it. There, there's an unequal treatment here, but I want to go back to my original question, and maybe, Mr. Radke, you can clarify something for me. There's, there was a gap in time between when, when the previous council said, let's look at these options, and let's see what is the value of this property, what are the economic benefits, and let's get a wholesome look here, which we never saw. And somewhere along the way, when this council, the, the current council gave direction, there must have been some work done on it. There was a, a significant gap in terms of time for someone to look at and saying, you know, if, if we took the full value of this, we could build a smaller customized baseball facility somewhere, and we could still get the benefits out of this. That, that is being cast aside, is being swept aside here. So was there some work ever done on, on that file?
Mr. Mayor, 2009 predates myself here, but I, I can't say there was a, a report that was being drafted to take to committee to further look at some economic opportunities, but in terms of values and such, staff did not, had not pursued that level of detail, was more trying to get additional direction from committee and council to, to move forward with, to really look at the value of the land.
Okay, well, Mr. Mayor, let me, let me just conclude, because I see my time has, has expired, and while I have other, I'm just doing a quick wrap-up here. So I look at this, I look at the, the fact that we've committed to building the pedestrian overpass, and there isn't one person around this table who committed to that, because some, some baseball fans are going to be going from the transit station or from the train station across to a ballgame. This is not anti-baseball. This is about, is there a proper facility out there, can we provide a proper facility? This is about getting the best use out of that land, and we're not doing that, and we're being very short-sighted. And when we voted for the, we voted for the pedestrian overpass at, at a sig-
Councillor, we asked for a 30-second wrap-up, and it's been over a minute and a half, so thank you.
Then somebody must have taken my time then, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
So anyways, it is a short-term, it's a short view.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Hubley?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I will not be supporting this motion to spend more than $6 million of taxpayers' money over the next 10 years on the Can-Am League team, which is being referred to in the media and on radio as a friends and family league. I'm sure there are some people who believe that investing in the five-team Can-Am league is a good investment, but I don't share that opinion. I cannot be convinced that this product will ever draw the number of fans needed to support the team, and because of that, I cannot support the investment of residents' hard-earned money into a stadium that we are being asked to do today. In your summation at Fedco meeting last week, you said that we cannot just be negative nellies, and that if we do not support this particular project, that we need to also put forward an alternative. So, Mr. Mayor, that is why I'll be seeking the support of council for the following motion or direction to staff. The council directs staff to conduct a request for interest, or RFI, to determine if there's any proposals for the Ottawa Stadium property, and not limit ourselves only to baseball. It's my sincere belief that the taxpayers of Ottawa would be better served when we have all the options considered. I'd like to ask, if I could, a couple of questions as well. We have been searching for years for a great baseball proposal without success, as councillor Blowus has pointed out. Some would say that baseball at any cost to taxpayers is acceptable, but I want to, I'm going to skip ahead here, Mr. Mayor, and just get right to the point. If staff could tell me what the capacity of the field is as compared to what the attendance estimates per game for this league is anticipated to be? So we get a sense of how full this stadium is expected to be over the 50-game schedule?
Through, Mr. Mayor, the, they're basing their, their proposal on approximately 4,000 tickets sold per game.
And how many seats? How, what's the capacity?
Mr. Mayor, the capacity of the ballpark is approximately 10,600 seats.
So at the best estimate, we're talking about half-filling this statement. Will we still need, if you could, I'd like to know, do we still need to build the pedestrian bridge, if this is the league that we are talking about bringing into the stadium? Or will we find a savings there and not have to build the bridge?
Mr. Mayor, the, the value equation for that bridge goes far beyond the, the potential use that people going to see baseball in that stadium would make of it. It's a, it is a piece of infrastructure that spans, we all know what the highway is, a barrier. It is, it's important in terms of being able to maximize the transit-oriented development that will take place around the station, south of the, of the 417, and connecting it north of the 417, and frankly, its connection in terms of supporting baseball, while it'll be a big benefit to baseball, it is a small piece of the value equation for the city for that bridge.
Thank you. I'd like to also ask a question about the report that we had brought in. The, as Reiner, as councillor Blowus pointed out, and I just want to confirm, so at no time did we look for any other proposal other than baseball for this facility? Is that correct?
No time in the last two years, Mayor, that is correct.
Okay. And when we look at the estimates that are put in here, where the, the report that was recently tabled tells us that we're looking at approximately $360,000 in cost to mothball this on an annual basis, which is very close to the $400,000 that is listed in the report for operating costs. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, that mothball number is, is correct, but that mothball number includes the life cycle costs that would be incurred during the mothball, the $400,000 being referenced is, is strictly operating.
Okay, before I ask a couple of questions about what's included in that mothballing, I'd like to ask, well, I- like to ask, well, I did ask at Fedco to have provided to me a breakdown of those mothball costs. I've got a couple of sheets that were delivered, but they don't seem to add up. I'll bring your attention to a couple of examples. In February 28, 2011, the Ottawa Business Journal reports staff estimating mothballing costs of the stadium would be $77,000 a year. So in two short years, we've gone from 77 to 360. In the 2009 report that was referenced earlier on baseball, the mothballing costs are estimated at $11,000 a year. So there's big differences in these numbers over a short period of time. I just wonder if you could speak to why we would see such big differences?
Mr. Mayor, I think it probably comes down to what the definition, and I can't remember the context of the previous numbers, but I would guess, in fact, I'd be sure that the difference is in what is the definition of mothball costs? If the definition of mothball costs is the building is not occupied, it isn't programmed, but we will spend the money that we're required to from a legislative or safety or regulatory framework, and we will spend the money that will prevent the asset from falling into the ground, that's when you get into something like the order of $300,000 a year. If it is, put a lock on it and let it fall into the ground, and don't monitor it, and don't run security around to see what's happening in that building while it's sitting vacant, you can get to a much lower number. And I imagine that explains the difference. Peter, can you add anything to that?
Mr. Mayor, that would be accurate. And in terms of operational costs from a mothballing perspective, there are miscellaneous repairs that need to get done. There's still snow clearing that needs to get done, because you still have to have a fire route. And as Mr. Kirkpatrick pointed out, there are legislative requirements for various inspections, as well as security for the facilities. Staff still needs to have security drive around the stadium to make sure no one's breaking into the facility. Thank you.
In fact, one of those costs that's listed in one of the two spreadsheets I was provided with shows half an FTE to be the first contact in case there is a fire, and we're putting that at $35,000 a year, or $375,000 over the 10-year contract. Like, how many fire alarms do we expect to get at this facility that it would take a half an FTE to cover these fire alarms? I'm kind of surprised to see that number. Like, maybe this is a risk to the community to leave this facility standing.
Mr. Mayor, the first point of contact is more than just fire alarms. It'd be any inquiry for the stadium, whether there's kids spraying graffiti, or just hanging out at the stadium, or if there's a water leak at the stadium. And even if it's mothballed, the staff person would still need to go into the facility just to make sure there aren't any pipes broken, there isn't any incidents going on inside the stadium.
So I believe Counselor Blowis also referenced some of these. I'll just give a couple of quick examples. So if we mothball the facility, we would still repave and line the parking lot at a cost of $600,000?
Mr. Mayor, no, sir. You may be referring to the life cycle costs that have been proposed if we have an operating program in the stadium, including baseball.
But I asked for a report on what the life cycle costs were for mothballing, and this is what I was provided with. So these are the numbers I'm going off of.
Counselor, your time is up, as you can see on the clock.
Okay, I'll come back on. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, you don't come back on. It's five minutes at council.
Well, then, could I have the same?
Well, one last point for 30 seconds.
The playing field, we're going to redo the playing field. We're going to replace carpet at $70,000. Are these costs only if we're keeping it open?
I apologize, Counselor. I distracted Mr. Radke and myself. Could you repeat that question?
The carpet replacement, it's listed at $70,000. We're looking at field plumbing fixtures, $135,000. And I'll say one more, replace the P A system at a quarter million dollars. Are these part of the mothballing, or no?
Mr. Mayor, no, they are not. That would only be if we have active programming in the stadium.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to put that motion forward, if I could, please.
Okay, if you have a second there?
Counselor Tierney, I believe, is the second there?
Counselor Monet, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd be very clear that I will not support that motion. We've had a clear indication from council, and the RFP and the staff followed what it was intended to be, and that was to find out what interest did we have to use this facility as a baseball stadium. My first option obviously would have been the highest level of all, which would have been double-A. Unfortunately, after looking at the numbers, that would not be an option. So basically, we have three options in front of us. Number one is vote against an emotion, which will create three scenarios. Mothball the stadium, we create another south-side stands. And yes, if you're looking at developing this for another condo or something like that, maybe that's the way to go. Number two is reintroduce the discussion of demolishing the stadium. The community has been loud and clear that they prefer this stadium to stay as a baseball stadium, and I think it has been loud and clear that that's the direction that the council has supported. Option number three is vote against this Can-Am proposal and accept double-A. If we accept double-A, we're looking at $42.2 million just for startup costs. Annual operating costs will be $3.5 million, and it'll be a 20-year lease. If you look at Can-Am, we're looking at $750,000 startup costs, $400,000 annually, which is not much more than mothballing the stadium, and 10-year lease with two possible five-year options. Also, Counselor Shirelli had moved a motion that after 10 years, we can look at other possibilities for the stadium. Counselor Blowis had mentioned about many community fields, many community uses are needed. One of the things that we will be looking at in this proposal is to increase community use of the stadium, not only for baseball, but for all kinds of community events. I had stated at the Fedco meeting that I had visions that was not only for the Can-Am, but I'd like to see the national baseball team be part of that location, as well as women's national baseball team. I'd like to see provincial and national tournaments at this location. I'd like to see recreation events and community events on a regular basis at the stadium. And that's one direction that staff have made clear, is that we want to maximize the use of the stadium. As we move forward, today, I'd like to recognize Miles Wolf, who's the commissioner of Can-Am. He's been very involved with the Can-Am League, and also David Gorley, who's from the Champions of Baseball. He's also been very involved with promoting baseball, and it's great to see both of them sitting together. Break-even point that was mentioned there just a couple of minutes ago, actually, a break-even point for the Can-Am League is roughly around 2,500 attendance. That, I'm sure, we can achieve. The Ottawa Fat Cats alone achieved 2,500 to 3,000 attendance, and with the playoffs, they average around 7,000 attending the games. Can-Am is a professional baseball league. The Ottawa Stadium is a professional baseball stadium. I think as we move forward, there's been discussion about the bridge that's crossing over and the value of the land. I agree, we can do more with the land, but the baseball stadium is something that we should protect. There has been discussion about redeveloping the parking part of the lot. That is something we can look at, and one of the equations that I made sure that was put in place if we redevelop it is that the parking is protected for future baseball leagues. So whatever we have in parking, that would be protected if we ever developed it. If we're ever, ever, ever able to develop it, then we can offset some of the costs and help out the, so it's not as much of a burden on the taxpayers. I think we have one of the nicest baseball stadiums in Canada, and to continue having the discussion about tearing it down, I find it's kind of sad, because I think, once you tear it down, you will not see another stadium of that magnitude. Yes, and I'll wrap up now, because I only have 30 seconds. Yes, I noticed that the cost of it was $17 million to build, but that stadium has earned a lot more than $17 million today. And I urge people around the table to support the motion. Let's carry forward, and let someone like Miles Wolf and David Gorley show what we can do with baseball in the city of Ottawa. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Thank you very much. Merci beaucoup, conseiller. Counselor Tierney, please.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. It feels a little bit like Groundhog Day. We keep coming back to this discussion, and I believe last time I indicated I was very concerned we needed to get an MLB affiliate in here, and that's what we were all expecting. So I'm really wrestling with this one, because nobody likes to close in on certain sports. But even last February in 2012, Counselor Blowis and myself, and here's some of the concerns I'm really having and wrestling with, we looked at using one of our own half-FTEs, one of our own city FTEs, a half-body that was required for the maintenance side. And this report is saying we'll need a body and a half now. That's more cost for the taxpayer again. So the costs keep going up, but I don't see any revenue model that's going to help us out. And I think, in the words of Albert Einstein, "The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result." I really was hoping we'd see the MLB affiliate in place, something that's going to drive the energy and drive the marketing we need to be able to make a successful sports vertical. But I just really don't see that in this situation. So very much unfortunately, I'll be voting against this today. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Counselor Flurry, please.
Thank you. I have a few questions, and then I'd like to pursue the debate with my colleagues.
It's recommendation number five that speaks of the 10-year lease agreement. I'm just wondering, what are the situations, or under which situation would the agreement fall in terms of the city? Because it seems that, you know, there seems to be an out clause after the 10 years, but what happens during the 10 years if, you know, a franchise doesn't come forward, or if the franchise does come forward but is moved? What are the responsibilities there?
Mayor, in terms of the net costs that we spoke about earlier with Counselor Blowis, the lease terms that have been agreed to in the MOU include, the only revenue that is secured during the term of the lease is one year's minimum rent. There'd be a performance bond or a letter of credit for that. Other than that, it's a contract that if it was, if the Can-Am franchise was to prove to be unsuccessful, or folded, or walked away from the agreement, that's all we have the security for. You can always sue people for non-performance under a contract, but frankly, I would tell council you should make your decision, assuming that one year's rent is guaranteed. I think, though, what's important to mention is that that is exactly the same guarantee that was provided for under the second bid as well. It is typically what we see when we go and research minor baseball. You don't get lease guarantees beyond one or two years' rent being guaranteed. And I think it's important to take a look at, I mean, that folds right into the risk assessment that staff talk about in the report, in terms of the amount of investment and the risk that's associated with it in terms of ongoing benefits. In this case, not very much of the revenue is guaranteed, but there's a very minimal upfront capital investment that goes along with that.
So just to clarify my position, I think that there's room for baseball in Ottawa, for professional baseball. There was a strategic investment that was made in the '90s where we bought land.
The city of Ottawa took ownership of that land. It became a park. We describe it now as a baseball park, but it's still a city asset. So when I hear of, you know, we could be working on other parks, well, guess what? That is a park, and, you know, it's a big infrastructure, it's got 10,000 seats, granted. And, you know, under the current proposal, we hope that it fills the seats, but we're realistic. I guess some of the focus in my mind needs to be in terms of not mixing what a park can be. Mr. Kirkpatrick, you talked earlier about the bridge. Well, I don't know if you've passed or driven east this year, but the polls are already up, and the bridge is going forward, and it's going to be a wonderful asset for the community, not because of baseball, but in terms of accessing via rail and the future light rail. The really interesting one is, okay, we didn't get double-A, okay, AAA is not coming back, but we have a commissioner that seems dedicated. He's here today, and we hope him all the best in terms of fulfilling a good level of baseball in Ottawa. That brings me to my following point, 50 games. We have 315 days to fill, and that's where our focus in my mind should be at council. That's our responsibility as a city, is to fill that stadium with all sorts of activities all year round. It shouldn't be, you know, just a white, snowed-in structure all winter. There should be outdoor rinks, as the worst comes to worst, or there should be a dome to bring in some field activity, if possible. I mean, those are the types of investment that I think council can get around. It is, once again, a public park, and there is some assets for office space at that stadium that cannot be neglected. We might easily be able to offset some of the investment in terms of that. And I'll wrap up by saying this. It was an investment in the 1990s, I think, that the stadium was designed and built, or late '80s, early '90s, an investment, and we didn't continue the investment. We left it, and it, you know, unfortunately, now we're caught in terms of reinvestment for plumbing, lighting, and all that nice stuff to get it upfitted to an appropriate level. But let's give this a chance in terms of putting our staff and our pressure in fulfilling the 315 days to what this park can be, and let's hope that baseball works.
Counselor Clark, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, it's rather interesting to hear some of this stuff. Lease term, well, the lease term protects two people, protects us and protects the lessees, who needs a certain amount of time to build product recognition, product acceptance, and all those kind of things. It's standard business requirement. We did try a soccer bubble. I think the one from Lansdowne, it wouldn't fit. That doesn't mean another one might not fit. The Ped Bridge, well, the Ped Bridge has train yards, has LRT, has the railway station, has all kinds of ancillary uses. And to say, well, if the Ped Bridge, if we didn't build it, it would make the stadium less or more attractive. Frankly, it will make it more attractive if we have a Ped Bridge and an LRT in there, and we hope to have that in the next few years. Community use, we did get some community use this summer, and it's viable to have community use. We've determined that. The whole notion of having it instead of a lease that says you have 100% use of the stadium, and all of the ancillary naming rights and all that other stuff, there's a collaboration there which may improve the revenue picture. People talk about revenue model, revenue model for this thing, a person and a person and a half. Well, I'd like to know what the revenue model is for that ice surface we put in out on Sheffield Road, and I can tell you, it's not positive. And the development possibilities, we could tear that down and put up towers. The development company probably paid good money for that site. The reality is that we're not talking about alternative uses, we're talking about a purpose-built stadium. It's built to have baseball, it's built to add yet one more attraction to the overall city, and it was built many years ago, as I was involved somehow or other, along with Jim Durrell. Durrell. And the realities are that this is a fine stadium. It may be a little, call it, large for the particular league we're looking at. But the particular league also is professional baseball league. And there's lots of stories about people coming from the independent leagues into major league ball. It's not necessarily all going to be people with their walkers coming out to the baseball park to play baseball. You know, the images that have been portrayed here are all negative. And it just bothers me a little bit to see all that negativity that's coming from around the table. I know it's not in Canada, but that doesn't mean you can't support it in the East End. In Winnipeg, there's lots of sports associations leasing city facilities. It's possible that there are national sports associations who would take advantage of reasonably priced office rental. The whole revenue side... Are you on the mic?
All right.
You want to have a one-on-one? Is that what it is? Anyway, in Winnipeg, as I said, the national and provincial sports organizations are utilizing city property to take advantage of a joint-use operation. So there are lots of opportunities here on the revenue side. There's lots of possibilities. But at the bottom of it all, it's a purpose-built stadium. The purpose is baseball. And whether or not we can attract, in the future, a higher-level affiliate, if we don't do anything to keep the stadium in good shape now, that's going to be even farther away than it is. So that we do two things with this. We cover life cycle improvements. We get some use out of the stadium that's for the purpose. And we can get community events in there if we keep the facility up to date. So quite clearly, this is a win for the community. My community and the city.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Blowis, you've spoken already. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You are correct I've spoken already, but I'm sure you don't want to push the silent button, because I will be referring to the motion on the screen as opposed to what I spoke about before.
Right. But we only deal with that one in the event that the main report fails, and then we come to that.
Well, this...
So we have to deal with the main report with respect to the use of the lease.
Well, my understanding would have been that this would have been dealt with first, because this would supersede the main event, because it could change the way the rest of the report is dealt with.
No, it's dealt with secondarily.
So what are you saying? I'm not going to speak until this comes back up. It's on the screen. It's on the table now.
Yeah. But until we deal with the use of the stadium, if this is defeated, then Counselor Hubley would then have his motion on the table, because we're no longer using it for baseball.
Well, Mr. Mayor, it's starting to sound more like a hockey game in here than a debate, I guess. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Blay, please.
A good old hockey game.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You know, I would have liked to have had the amendment dealt with before the main report, but I can speak to both at the same time. There are probably not many bigger baseball fans in this room, other than me, except for maybe the exception of Counselor Manette. I grew up watching the Blue Jays. I remember when Roberto Alomar hit the homerun in the ALCS against the A's to send them to the World Series. And the Blue Jays have been my team for as long as I can remember. That being said, I'm not sure that we've properly explored all the potential with this site. How creative have we gotten in leveraging the offer of double-A baseball? What other opportunities for the site may exist that might also allow us to do double-A baseball or some other form of ball? And nothing against the league and the group that wants to come in at present, but it's certainly not, I think, what I was hoping for and expecting, and I think the people were hoping for and expecting. And I understand we can't always get what we want, as the Rolling Stones have made famous. But I'd like to see us look for alternatives for the site without getting into something we can't get out of today. I'm not sure if we've looked at P3s, how we might do a land exchange for renovations of the stadium, et cetera. So I would certainly support the motion by Counselor Hubley. And if that did not pass, I would... I'm not sure I could support the recommendation from the report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Deans, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, as you know very well, I'm pretty lukewarm to this idea because of the history. And we've tried so hard and so long to make baseball work here, and we've not really been successful. And this Can-Am league, we've had a Can-Am league before, and we didn't make a go of it. So I'm not convinced at all in any way that we're going to make a go of it this time, although I do think that there's some opportunities for stronger leadership and locally-owned team, you know? And I hope they knock it out of the park, but I'm just not convinced that that's going to happen. But having said that, the reason I'm going to vote for it today is something that Mr. Kirkpatrick told the FedCo committee last week. And that is that there's a lot of development going on in Ottawa right now, and that we're in the midst of building light rapid transit. And that property, if we were to go out to request for proposals or expressions of interest for that site, the site would be more valuable five years from now when LRT is up and running than it is today. So I see this as sort of a last-ditch effort to see baseball work, because that was a stadium that was purpose-built, constructed for baseball, and I hope it does. I think the reality is that it's unlikely. But if it is unlikely, then we've bought some time, I think, some valuable time, to get the uplift in the value. And one of the things we have to do is protect our taxpayers' financial interests. And I think it is protecting their interest to wait until that property has an uplift in value before we change gears. So we can hope all we want that baseball will work, but it is probably in our interest to wait, to go out to the market, to look for other uses for that site. And that's why I'm going to vote for this today. Thank you.
Great. Anyone else wish to speak?
My point of order is...
...be dealt with first, because it talks about whether we even need to go into the second one. So shouldn't we vote on my motion first?
Well, I've ruled already, Counselor, that we have to deal with the main motion dealing with the use of the facility. And if that fails, then we would deal with your motion.
Then I'd like to challenge that motion. I'd also like to correct two things that Counselor Clark...
Well, that's not the time to do that. So you've challenged the chair. So shall the chair be sustained, is the question. If you support my ruling, it's yes. If not, it's no. So shall the chair be sustained? Roll call, please.
Counselor Holmes?
Yes.
Counselor Hobbs?
Yes.
Counselor Codri?
Yes.
Counselor Tierney?
No.
Conseiller Manette?
Yes.
Counselor McCray? Counselor Thompson? Counselor Chernoshenko?
Yes.
Counselor Egley?
Yes.
Counselor Hume?
Yes.
Conseiller Fleury?
Oui.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Moffett?
Yes.
Counselor Hubley?
No.
Counselor Blowis?
No.
Counselor Deans?
Yes.
Conseiller Duroche?
Yes.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Yes.
Counselor Alshantiri?
Yes.
Counselor Shirelli? Conseiller Blay? Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Eighteen yeas, four nays.
Okay. So on this particular report, just a couple of observations. At times, I think some of us have a bit of political amnesia on these files. And I raise that for the simple reason that we recall a couple of years ago, the outrage by almost every member who spoke when staff brought forward the proposal that we develop the site. It's too early, too premature. We shouldn't go down that path. We have a baseball stadium. Let's try to get a team. So staff had their knuckles wrapped pretty hard by some of the same members around the table who are now proposing that we demolish the baseball stadium. Point number one. Secondly, politics, unlike community activism, is about making choices. Community activists can pick and choose issues. We have to always say yea or nay to something, and we have to have, in my opinion, an alternative use. And so I haven't heard any alternative use. I raised that question at FedCo. I haven't had an onslaught of emails from members of council on what exactly to put in a baseball stadium other than baseball. So we have an opportunity. We went out. The staff worked hard. Community groups like Champions for Baseball worked hard. And we had two bids. One, according to staff, and I support that notion, was too rich for our tastes. $40 million was not a good use of tax dollars in these difficult economic times. So we came forward with another alternative that is perhaps less grandiose than having affiliated baseball, but it's baseball at a good caliber. And we've heard from our expert, Counselor Manette, who's worked very hard on this. This is a good league. We can't compare it, I think, as Counselor Deans pointed out, to the last Can-Am league, because they only had four or five months to get the team together. This gives them the time to move into a stadium that will be brought up to a proper, decent standard, and give them more time to sell tickets, to go out and seek sponsorship, and to obtain local buy-in to the program. And it will also, the good thing, and Counselor Clark has raised this and others, it also opens up the facility for more community use. I love the idea that Counselor Manette, and I think Counselor Harder, has talked about in the past, where we actually go out and we attract major baseball tournaments. We're hosting the Canadian Little League in 2015 in Barhaven, and I'm hoping that the final game is at Ottawa Stadium. And that's a big feather in our cap to get those, you know, hundreds of kids coming, and their parents, and tourists. And that's the kind of spirit I like to see at that facility. You know, I was guilty many years ago of the one that wanted to tear down the Southside stands because we didn't have a football team. And I was in the burn unit for about three weeks on that one. But the fact of the matter is, common sense prevailed. And guess what? Most of us were on that tour. Thank goodness I was wrong, and we backed down. Because we are going to have a world-class stadium that we're going to be very, very proud of. And so the community use aspect excites me above and beyond the 50 games of baseball, because we're going to be able to have little leagues there. We're going to have tournaments. We're going to be able to use it for concerts. One of the best concerts I've ever been at was at Link Stadium, as it was called back then. It was Great Big C, and I think Downchild Blues Band, there's another three Canadian bands. It was just a perfect setup to go and watch. I'm dating myself with some of those bands, but not Great Big C. And it was a chance for us to use that facility. And I think, as Counselor Fleury pointed out, the access that we have all supported to get, the train yards in Counselor Hume's ward, which is a very big development and gets bigger, that community linked up with light rail to come over to the Coventry Road community, which is not just baseball. There's businesses over there. There's housing development, more housing growing up, I think makes that land even more marketable, and more profitable, and more valuable for the future. But this opportunity gives us an opportunity to use a baseball stadium for baseball. It's at a much more reasonable and fiscally responsible price tag for the taxpayers. And I'd urge you to vote for this, to give a strong endorsement to the Can-Am league. Allow them, over the course of the next several months, to sign a lease with our staff. And I thank Peter and our city manager, who've worked very hard on this file. And put a good team on the field. Allow Dan Chenier and his department to program that facility, just as we're going to be programming Lansdowne, the public space area, the Aberdeen, the Horticulture Building, and get better use out of it than we've had right now. And lesson learned for us all, that if we don't invest in life-cycle maintenance, we pay the price down the road. And so, yes, we have to put some tax dollars into this asset, because it is our asset, plain and simple. It's not as if it's, you know, some derelict property owner. It's ours. And we have to maintain it. And if we don't maintain it, the price is going to be a lot more expensive to fix it up if down the road we get another baseball bid. So I thank members of council, and I know Counselors Manette and Shirelli and Clark have been intimately involved in this particular file. And I thank our staff. My chief of staff has worked very hard, as has the city manager, Peter Radke, Steve Katalakis, Dan Chenier. It's been a real team effort. I'm proud of the work we've done. We have no guarantee that this is going to be a success, but for us to simply say no right now, I think is short-sighted on our part. Yea's and nays, please, Madam Deputy Clerk.
Counselor Holmes?
Yes.
Counselor Hobbs?
Yes.
Counselor Codri?
Yes.
Counselor Tierney?
No.
Conseiller Manette?
Oui.
Counselor McCray? Counselor Thompson?
Yes.
Counselor Chernoshenko?
Yes.
Counselor Egley?
Yes.
Counselor Hume?
Yes.
Conseiller Fleury?
Oui.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Moffett?
Yes.
Counselor Hubley?
No.
Counselor Blowis?
No.
Counselor Deans?
Yes.
Conseiller Duroche?
Yes.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Yes.
Counselor Alshantiri?
Yes.
Counselor Shirelli?
Yes.
Counselor Blay? Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Twenty yeas, three nays.
Thank you. Counselor Hubley's motion, said by Counselor Tierney, is now redundant. Next item that was pulled off the bulk consent agenda, Ottawa Centre Eco-District. Counselor Holmes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to have this opportunity to say what a wonderful idea I think this is, what a great vision for the downtown is being proposed. I see Don Grant in the audience here, one of the co-chairs. But the interest in getting building owners together to do district heating and cooling plants, for example, to work together to make the downtown more livable, more exciting, public art, public spaces, environmentally exciting, that we can market the downtown as an area that people can come and save money in their buildings by being much more efficient in their energy usage. So congratulations to this group, and thank you for going to the FCM and bringing money into Ottawa with our small contribution to be able to access that FCM money. So all in all, it's a great idea, and I want to commend all the people who've worked so hard on it. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, on the motion, carried. Counselor Hubley registers his dissent. So I'd call on Counselor Shirelli to read a statement, please.
I, Counselor Rick Shirelli, declare potential deemed peculiar interest on council agenda item 62-4, Planning Committee Report 56A, Official Plan and Zoning Montreal Road District Secondary Plan. As my brother is acting as a real estate consultant, began a business discussion seeking to place a client in a property at 444 Montreal Road, and may have involvement in the item, although that's not determined.
Okay, thank you. Motion to adopt reports. Motion pourtant adoption de rapport. Counselor Blowis, please.
Que le rapport 37 du comit...
That Finance and Economic Development Committee Report 37, Planning Committee Reports 56A and 57, and Transportation Committee Report 31 be received and adopted as amended.
Motions of which notice have been previously given. Motion dont aviez été donnée entièrement. We have the change in Counselor Hobbs and Blowis's motion to specify non-transit vehicles. If that's understood and agreed. So on Counselor Hobbs' motion, carried. Motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedure, Counselor Blay on a motion of dedication of bridge in honor of an OPP officer killed in the line of duty. On the motion to suspend, carried. Counselor Blay, please. Seconded by Counselor Elshantiri. Seconded by councillor Alshantiiri.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The OPP are hoping to dedicate a bridge which spans the 417 in Vars after Constable Richard Michael Jean, who died in the line of duty on Sunday, October 23, 1993. And per their policy to do so, they require the consent of the municipality. So I'm hoping we will all consent to honor this, this hero.
Great. On the motion, carried. Adoptez, merci, thank you. Are there any other motions requiring suspension of the rules? Notices of motion for consideration at subsequent meetings? Motion to introduce bylaws. Councillor Blowis, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That the bylaws listed on the agenda under motions to introduce bylaws, three readings be read and passed.
Carried. Confirmation bylaw, councillor Blowis and Blay.
That the following bylaw be read and passed to confirm the proceedings at council meeting of October 9, 2013.
Carried. Are there any written inquiries, Madam Deputy Clerk? No. Councillor Blowis, do you have it, has it been submitted?
It's in front of me right now and it will, it'll be submitted as soon as I read it in. That staff provide any background documents and reports related to the December 2009 motion to review the options for the 300 Coventry site, as per the information gathered through the business development strategy process that was undertaken as part of the city's LRT project with respect to connections and development opportunities for project stations, including train station. Thank you.
Okay. Adjournment, councillor Blowis, please.
That the proceedings of the city council meeting on October 9, 2013 be adjourned.
Adoptez, carried. Thank you very much. Merci beaucoup. Meeting adjourned.